Legions, would you please rise and say the pledge to lead us with it?
I am a Legion, the United States of America. And to the regardless of the jurisdiction, limitation, I'm not invisible with the Republican House for this.
All right, item three is approval of the agenda. Would anybody like to move any of the consent agenda items to the regular agenda? Harry, none. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Brown, seconded by Livingston. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. That motion carries. Item number four is welcome guests and public comment. Thank you for being here tonight, participating with us. At this point in time, we'll open up the dais for any public comment that you want to give to council, myself and staff. We'll give you three minute time limit. Understand this for non-agenda items. And we can't take action on those since they aren't on the agenda. Also, if you'd like to comment on any item in the consent agenda, now would be the time. Anybody want to address council? Harry, none. We will move on. Item number five is consent agenda. Can I get a motion? Motion by Brown, seconded by Livingston. Kayla, would you call roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yeah.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes. All right, motion carries. Item six is old and new business for consideration, discussion and possible action. Item A is a public hearing regarding a rezoning request from diligent development to change fourteen point eight seven acres north of Blooming Heights. From AR agriculture reserve to R one sixty, single family residential. So we'll open up public hearing at six oh two PM. This is the Kutcher property that's just north of Blooming Heights. It looks like they'll extend Rosebud Street to get into the property. Luke, I'll let you take it from here.
Yep, that's correct. It's about fourteen point eight acres directly north of Blooming Heights three. So even though it's a different development, we'll probably, I think we're terming this like Blooming Heights five, I believe. So be in addition to that, right now, we are just looking at the rezoning of it to R one. It does meet our comp plan. We have done some preliminary discussions with the development group to get a bigger picture of how things might look with the rest of the Kutcher property development and what form this might take as far as a subdivision, but that's not before you today. We'll bring that forward if it is rezoned in the form of a preliminary plat. But yeah, for the time being, we're looking at fourteen and a half acres of R one. What did we say? I'm sorry, I missed it. R one sixty.
Okay. Kayla, have we received any more written comments on this?
No.
Any public comments? Harry, none. We'll go ahead and close public hearing at six oh three PM.
I would, I guess, note from public comment period, we did at planning zoning commission have a public neighbor that spoke up against it concerned about this development in his backyard. He lived on Greenleaf Circle. So didn't have any other communication with him, but he did speak at planning and zoning.
Cool, thank you. Item six B is first reading of an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Norwalk, Iowa. By rezoning fourteen point eight six seven acres north of Blooming Heights from agriculture reserve to R one sixty, single family residential. So we just had a public hearing on this property. Luke, you got anything to add?
Nothing new.
All right, any discussion, questions, comments from council?
Get some questions. So I don't, so. What is the rest of the Kutcher property?
Oh, sure. I can go back to the map. It's going to be basically the kind of farm nature area to the east and yeah, primarily to the east of what's highlighted as a fourteen point eight acres.
That whole rest of that pink outlined?
I think we're going to get it drawn up there. Yeah, there you go. And then also the piece to the east of that, that is, does not have a field on it or a yeah, likely the homes, that homestead would stay and not be developed in the future, I would assume. I guess it could go away, but that's what we know as the Kutcher property when we talk about it.
And if I understood you correctly, we don't know what's going to happen or what the plan is with the rest of the Kutcher property.
Correct.
And what about the property to the west?
That is the Isley property, and we also have not seen development concepts for that. We will make sure and either one that we maintain road connectivity and infrastructure connectivity. So at such time that it were to develop, there are good connectivity to things, you know? We don't want a bunch of subdivisions that are isolated. So Timber View is a great example of that. There's a road that terminates at the Isley property. Right now, I think with the concept of the Kutcher property that we'd seen was that the road would continue to the north and then maybe would swing back around through the non rezoned part at some point out to fiftieth. The middle creek being a bit of an impediment to future road development and everything, so.
Is this in line with comprehensive plan?
It is.
Is the neighboring area that like council member lives?
Yes, it's.
Same thing?
Yeah, we basically have single family throughout all of that.
Question? Question? Do we have part piece as part of the intention addition?
Parkland will be required as part of the subdivision process. We don't have identified park space. That's actually one of the things we've been talking with the development group about is how we would accommodate that. So go in negotiations like this.
It's just thinking about looking at it, that area along and by the creek. You know, might make a pretty good linear park.
Definitely.
Other than that, I don't have any other comment.
So following up on that, since that northern portion is along the creek. Is that even developable?
Not from actually putting houses on it, probably, you know, it would either be something that we'd look at for parkland or backyards. Brad can fill you in more on his concepts.
Brad Cooper, Cooper Crawford Associates, Eric Bonacamp with diligent development's also here. There is a floodplain area that we have identified in that middle creek area. It does impact our lots, so we kept our lots quite a distance away from middle creek. So and in terms of the Kutcher property, we have provided quite a few concepts of what that could look like to the city in terms of residential development. This piece is also owned by Russ Hickson and his wife. His wife is Dave Kutcher's daughter. And they're the ones who live in the homestead there with all the horses. And he's, they're not really in favor of selling a lot more currently, so. This is the first phase, the second phase, we're not sure when that will come along, but it'll be probably up to Russ Hickson and his wife, so.
Thanks.
And we did, we do have some concepts with some park ground shown, but we kind of went back and forth with with staff and parks and the way it's looking is they probably will want money in lieu of park ground to help improve Timber View Park. So and in terms of our development, right now, it's looking like a large lot, seventeen lots subdivision. Where we would just take Red Bud down the hill and turn to the east. Temporal second.
And was this part of the overall, original overall Blooming Heights plan?
No, no. Now, the Kutchers did sell the original Blooming Heights ground, though. That was theirs.
Thanks. Other questions?
For any public comment? Can I get a motion to approve the first reading was presented?
Second.
Okay, so motion by Baker, seconded by Cool. Any further discussion? Kayla, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
No.
Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries.
Thanks.
Yep. Item six C.
Oh, surely.
Is a resolution approving the site plan of Demoss. So Demoss is going to expand into Des Moines, into Norwalk, sorry. Which is, it's a great addition to Norwalk. The site is going to be to the north of the new city state bank building. Luke, I'll turn it over to you.
Yep, so sites bounded north of the city state bank, roads on three other sides with highway twenty eight to the west and Turnberry to the north. And then that private drive, I guess, to the east. So again, it's the Demoss site. Not a whole lot of real nitpicky things with it. Meets our architectural standards, our zoning requirements. We did have reduced open space requirements in that area, so it meets that. So it does, it is a little bit more of a intense use on that site than we might see in a lot of commercial sites, but that has to do with that reduced open space. It is part of the Elizabeth Holland benefited stormwater drainage district, so there's no detention onsite. It will connect into the storm sewer system and utilize the park for drainage. Let's see, what else? We've got a proper landscape buffer, parking requirements fifty one, fifty eight are provided onsite. Architectural elevations, they're at the very end, sharp looking building, I think, meets our requirements.
Luke, on that site plan, is there a sidewalk on highway twenty eight?
There is not. So the sidewalk on this site, and I guess just primarily, it's just going to be along Turnberry, the site to the east of that where Domino's was at. Sidewalk on Turnberry as well. We made the decision back when we were doing Elizabeth Holland Park that we weren't going to continue that trail on the east side up past city state bank. Really made that decision when city state bank built out around the time the park was getting finalized. Because eventually, when that trail went on highway twenty eight, you're going to have to go over that drainage way and everything, we thought. Well, it just makes sense to dive over to the park, then go up to Beardsley. So that's why we don't see that trail continuing on that section.
Looking at this picture right here, what is all the gray space?
That is the drive aisle.
Okay.
So those are like the other drive aisles for the parking.
Okay.
And happy. Probably benefits us more because the other occupants fell through early on.
Yep, at one time, we did have a car wash identified for the south off of that site, so. A better, probably a better long-term user, so.
Then George can look out the window with that. He's often.
I sprained my ankle.
That, yeah. Right here in town.
Yeah, that's it.
All right, motion. Any second. Okay. Yeah, yeah. Any other public comment? Hearing none. I got a motion by Baker, seconded by Livingston to approved resolution is presented. Any further discussion? Kayla, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item six D is first reading of an ordinance amending chapter one seventy seven, rates and fees of the Norwalk municipal code. Providing for amended fees for park and recreation basketball program. So due to the move to the field house, park and rec needs to increase the fees associated with the basketball program. The proposed increases are indicated in the agenda statement. Sarah, I'll turn it over to you. You got anything else?
We just, after we took the program from the school where we didn't have a cost into our city state bank Norwalk field house, after the first year, we reviewed the program. The costs involved referees, scorekeepers, all of the things, and this is our evaluation. We need to up the cost a little bit to cover the fees of the courts.
Awesome. Do the increases actually cover the full cost program?
They do, and they cover it at our minimum, minimum numbers required is what we gave you guys.
All right, good deal. Any discussion, questions, comments from council? Or public comment? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve first reading?
Motion second.
Motion by Brown, seconded by Livingston. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Kayla, would you call a roll?
Remember Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven, future agenda items. So the purpose of this item is for council to give direction to staff by way of a motion to have items placed on future agendas. It's not for the discussion of the merits of the subject matter, it's just get it on the agenda so we can discuss the merits. Any future agenda items for tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on. Huh? Go ahead. Yes. I think we need to look at, there's regarding the Norwalk Music Fest location, we might need to look at some of this as far as what's the best way to state it? We've had, we've had some, yeah, we've had some real problems considering we're only a month out. To try to do that, we just had a meeting with some of the hometown pride and I think we're going to have to do some action within the next three to four weeks, or in the next meeting at least. First street closures for the, yeah. For all of that.
Okay.
So hopefully they'll have the street closure application in by the next meeting? That's, there, we have a lot of things to discuss that are right in the finer face here. Okay. Running out of time. Okay. All righty. I think that that that'll come up when they submit the application, right? Yeah, but there's additional things I think we're going to have to look at. Okay, so you want to make most to? Discuss, what would be the best way to discuss? Music. Norwalk Music Fest.
It opens based on the next agenda for me to discuss.
Yeah. Just a discussion about it.
If you don't want to act. If you don't need action.
No, action, because we're running out of time.
So a discussion and possible action regarding implementation of that.
Okay. Okay, so motion by Baker, seconded by Livingston. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Hey, that one carries. Anything else? Call out? All right. Move on to item eight, council inquiries and staff updates. Like to remind everybody that this is a portion of the meeting is much less formal. You may hear some back and forth banner, general joking around. We believe this can build camaraderie and cohesiveness between staff and council, so.
Two quick items. First, on Sunday, I'm going to the Norwalk Christian Church to give them an update. In the past, you know, I've done PowerPoint and go through different updates, but I found with some of these groups, they're a lot better at asking questions. This is one of them. So my plan is to go in there and just focus on their questions, see if usually they have enough to talk about. But anyway, I'm also thinking about stealing the mayor's speech that Holly helped craft. I thought that was a great speech, by the way, at the Warren County Economic Development, that breakfast. So might use that for some guidance as well, but. And then the other thing, we have continued to have quite a few questions about our irrigation rates. Gene and I have been talking about them a lot. One of our council members, Brian, that's on the finance work group. He was, he worked with staff, kind of talking through him being an owner of property that has irrigation system to help give us some perspective. We've also learned some things about our HOAs in town that have these large joint irrigation systems and if and how those should be treated differently. The main reason I bring this up is because I thought, Brian, maybe that was something.
That's all I can say.
Well, I'm just bringing it up that we were taking a little bit deeper dive, looking at it very closely. I think we've been very fortunate this year. Actually, with the ban that happened on irrigation and having such a wet July, I think highest on record now. So it, there hasn't been a lot of usage of irrigation systems, but it's given us a good chance to really take a deep dive in how these the tiered system, the base rates being implemented.
It just, they didn't come out. That is for sure, and so we need to work.
So with some of the additional information, I think that's just going to come back in some other form. Normally, you know, we do that more on a yearly basis, but I could see that coming up a little bit sooner than a year later.
Correct. Go ahead. Good, Jack, Jason.
Yeah, I've got something to share here, and I can't take credit for most of this, so I'm going to try and, someone else is sharing. Let's see, send a request here.
Oh, or. If you email it to me, I can bring it up to it.
I need to email it to you. That's what you're doing, you friends?
No, go ahead. Yeah, yeah.
I did email it to you.
Okay.
Recently, so.
Oh, that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, if you want to show that up.
I gotcha.
Yeah, and you can just like hone in just on the map real quick.
I'm sharing it to YouTube.
Yeah, there you go. So this is, this is like part of my responsibility for the our ten year vision, our new ten year vision. And so I, I can take credit for very little of this. I brought an idea to the team and I told them and I continue to be amazed by the fact that they go, all right, we'll do it. Like, okay, so you know, it's really Holly and her team that did this. But this, it's on the basis of Norwalk being different than Ankeny, Norwalk being different than Waki, things like that, us being a unique destination point, and this is a way of affirming it. So it has to do with kind of branding each of the neighborhoods within Norwalk. So if you keep scrolling down, Luke. So there's a citywide branding strategy that we came up with, and I won't go into detail there. And then if you keep scrolling down. These are, these are some ideas related to each one of these communities, the naming of them. And then kind of a strategy and tagline for each of them as well. So if you keep just going down, lakefront communities, that's a group right there. Golf focused communities, there's four of those there. And then nature focused communities, nature focused neighborhoods. And these aren't necessarily in finalized form, but if you keep going down. Yeah, family oriented communities. It's that. And then historic and active living area, so. Anyway, I really appreciate the work that the staff did on, on putting some of these things together. This is just kind of a map out, a sketch out of what could be, and if you keep going down, then we can talk, I'll, I'll talk with you about some of the next steps here. So immediate next steps, schedule follow up meeting with city team before July one. And the reason why I didn't have them before July one is because somebody was extremely late in replying to Holly's team's email. I'm not going to say who he is, but its initials might be Jason Brown. So anyway, we want to generate a list of neighborhood champions, so people who love Norwalk, love their neighborhood. And make sure they get input into this. And, and then kind of start in. Also, the idea would be that maybe there would be some like branding opportunities for each neighborhood or just for us as a city. So I had sent Holly a map of Long Beach to go back to the original map. Long Beach was a city of neighborhoods, and that's what it was known for. And it was kind of special in that way. I, I lived in Long Beach. And I was thinking again, to kind of firm the fact that we're special is we could you know, brand these neighborhoods, give them taglines, things like that. And then it could develop over time as well. And hopefully Norwalk becomes a place again, like we talked about, not many big box stores, a lot of unique experiences, a lot of unique you know, food, clothing, retail. And hopefully this would just complement that overall strategy. And the basketball team this year put out a sweatshirt, the, the girls' basketball team. Their sweatshirt for the year was, it just said the walk. And I think that's a potential brand for Norwalk as well. So anyway, I, I wanted to update you. Holly, do you want to say anything else?
I mean, Jason had a great idea with the Long Beach neighborhood, so we just kind of dove into that. My team was awesome. I'm like, put together this presentation and really got into the details of how we could bring it all together with just the overall strategy of the various communities. And then hopefully people like Jackie might want to jump in as a neighborhood ambassador that's passionate about their neighborhoods in each one of these areas. And yeah, we'll just take Jason's guidance for how we can set where we should come together, since he's got experience with it in another state, that ours could be better.
Ours could, yeah. Yeah, I, again, just so thankful for how quickly they acted on it. Not thankful for how slowly I acted on it. And just again, kind of a pretty amazing team. So, thank you. Yeah. And if you've got any comments or thoughts, obviously.
The northwestern gap where I live, it's a desert. For names.
Need an identity, George.
Well, we were just going to call, we were left out on a lot of things, but.
We were going to call it George's place.
Normal, but I will say, I would throw an Arilla or Stone Ridge or something like that.
It'd be Stone Ridge.
Stone Ridge.
Yeah.
I think it's pretty slick.
Yeah. So that's all I have, but.
You might need more than ten years to get it all. Yep.
I'd have to add. I'm going to say, what I'm saying is, it's just, it takes a while for these things to take form. And it will take a while to do things within each neighborhood to continue to highlight the distinctiveness of each neighborhood as well. That won't happen all at once.
Yeah, and you're going to find a neighborhood champion of some sort. That'll be tough. No, we'll be tough. Okay. All right.
For some work, but yeah, a lot of people want a champion there.
All right, cool.
We'll find out.
Yeah. Thanks, Jason. Kayla? Jean?
No, thank you.
Sarah?
Our fall playbook went out last week, so everybody check that out. It's all of our programming. Our soccer, football and volleyball programs all start this month. And this Sunday, the pool closes for the season, so we're ending with our popular doggy dive. So if you're bringing your pup, it's from six forty five to seven forty five, five dollars per dog to get in. And it's cashless.
Yeah.
So.
All right.
You have the credit card machines at the fence.
Cool, awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Wayne requested that I give an update on, I mean, restaurants. Alvarado, I hope I'm saying that right, is Mexican is going into the old Mahalo's building, so there's.
That's good.
Popular, yes. And I have a drive through, which is fantastic, a burrito go. Fairway Franks stopped in there today over at, used to be Pyra Pizzeria, super cool looking. They've done a complete revamp renovation in there. It's pretty neat. So it's got a golf theme, but it is Italian food, which I told them if they had not done Italian food, there was going to be trouble because they're an Italian family. Have just a dedicated Italian only place just yet, so please talk about them. So they'll open in end of August is their what they're shooting for, at least a soft opening. They're waiting on a little bit of kitchen equipment. And then there is a new restaurant going into eight oh four main. I don't know if there's an announcement just yet on that one, but it is another local restaurant that's doing a second location, which is awesome. It's going to be very nice. They're already in there getting it. And then we do have another restaurant coming into Norwalk Central, which we'll announce hopefully soon. And obviously, we know about Culvers, so we'll get a little bit more official information out about them as soon as they're done with all of their approvals and everything like that. So those are, take it away. You're welcome.
Guys, guys will like it.
Guys, guys will like it.
Good.
Jean?
Just a quick one. And any, uh, any explanations for what's happening with eight oh four?
Yeah, so eight oh four is getting revamped right now. It is a new restaurant owner and it's a local restaurant that's doing it. So somebody that's already in Norwalk who's awesome is doing a second location in there right now. So we will be able to announce that.
I'd just like to call attention to the fact that you weren't listening. Exact same thing.
I see.
Yeah, but hey, while it was so important, I thought maybe if you best. Yeah, it's like, could you say that again?
It's okay, Ed.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
The auditor.
People.
Everybody listens to Jean.
The auditors are here at the end of July, be quiet. Your onsite work. Uh, we'll continue to work on completing reports and submitting, um, information to them throughout the next few months. That report should be complete and presented to you in November. I know you're gonna be really surprised, but I'm not perfect. Um, I, I'm gonna have something in the report for the first time and I'm really upset about it. But, um, after talking to the auditors, they talked me down. Um, the library purchased that land last July, it's like seven hundred thousand. We have the money in the trust fund. We didn't budget for it, but it shouldn't matter. We amended for it, but I amended in May instead of December. Um, so we're gonna get written up for that, but we did amend it in June. Uh, I said, how many cities do this? Or has this happened before? And they said, you're the only one. It doesn't happen to you. They said some cities don't even make an effort to amend mid-year when they have something like that. Uh, so that was the issue. I'm gonna blame Jean. And they are very well aware of it. So anyway, we're good. We have the money. Um, I just should have amended it probably in January. Uh, but everything else was good.
Awesome. Record still pretty good.
It won't happen again.
Alright. She's not planning on bonding or budgeting for another library land purchase, what's she saying?
Chief.
Nothing.
Chief.
On Wednesday, the thirteenth is the last, uh, front porch Norwalk. Fire Department is a host site. So if anybody, uh, doesn't have a neighborhood host site to come to, come to the fire department. I'll have some hot dogs and play some games. That's all.
Alright, cool. Wait.
Nothing.
Carrie?
Nothing.
Uh, we had nine residential permits in July and we approved the Culvers permit in July. So that should get started here soon. Hopefully, I've not seen their schedule, but it's not us holding them up. They've got, uh, they've got their permit. So, um, and then I think Luke mentioned it had been probably the wettest July we've had and, uh, that results in a lot of complaints about water, water runoff, erosion and that stuff. So we spent a lot of time in July going out, looking at sites, making sure that folks know what they're supposed to do. Um, just so you all know, our role as a city in that is to ensure that erosion control is in place. And, uh, i- is there per the plan that we approved? Um, usually you see it in the preliminary pla- packets. Um, so if we get a complaint, we'll go out there, look at it, and we'll give them a day to get it fixed or they'll get fined. Um, so far, we've not had to find anyone. Um, what that doesn't do is, uh, have the city compel the developer, whoever had the exposed dirt to remedy potential damages that were caused to someone else's property. So understanding that that can be frustrating to our residents at times, um, but we've dealt with that a lot, uh, this year with things and trying to work with the developers to find solutions. But at the end of the day, it ends up being between them, those two. We can kind of be there to give some, hey, you should really look at helping them out because, you know, that's the right thing to do. And, and, and they have. Um, but you know, at the end of the day, uh, when you feel like something's a, a problem and it doesn't seem like it's getting fixed, I can understand some of those frustrations, but.
I really liked your analogy, like the person going through a stop sign, hitting another vehicle.
Yes.
The accident that, yep, the city's there to give a ticket if they went through the stop sign, but ultimately two cars collide, it's between those two people to determine if there's a lawsuit or.
Yep.
Somebody fixing the other person's vehicle.
Yep.
He came up with that example.
Pretty good.
That's pretty good. I'm impressed.
Sometimes I, I amaze myself.
Before you move off that.
Yes.
Um, I don't know whose responsibility is to clean up the trail on Beardsley, but some of the, um, erosion control is not quite holding and Beardsley trail from like the lake um, west is a mess. So, just, I mean, it, it would.
Yep, I'll take, I know a lot of it was underwater today when I drove by, so I'm sure that once that water goes away, some of that material out of those has come across, so. Yep, well.
I don't know who cleans it now.
Yeah. It's, it's the developer. We'll, we'll get with them and, and have them get out there to clean it up, you know, so, yeah.
Cool. Ed?
No, sir.
George?
Alright, I do have something. After, uh, much great thoughts, I have decided not to, uh, run again for city council. And boy though, with a staff like this, an outstanding staff, that makes council's job. So but, uh, I'm just not going to. And since the end of August is when you have to have papers in, I thought I better give.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, too bad. Been fun working with you.
Um,
I guess I'm more on a, uh, another personal, not necessarily city, is that I had some new attorneys move into my old office. Um, spent a lot of time working with them and referring things and discussing what they do, and I think it's a good match with what I used to do, which it, it makes me happy because there, I think there's kind of a void when I left. And, uh, they are taking over some of my files and, you know, I'm introducing a lot of my old personal clients just to, uh, so that my clients have someplace to go. So I, I was happy with that. That was one of the last things I was worried about when, uh, from my move over to the city, which I've been, been happy with, but it's, uh, it's nice to know that people are covering that. Uh, the law firm is, they also have a office in Carlisle, and you know, also is Joe Strong, Terry Crapful, uh, Nick Carter, Bob Stivison. Um, I think that's it. I might have missed somebody. The old Elgin Patton Law Firm is what it is. So now they have three locations and uh, I'm happy to have them up there on the corner.
I got a couple things. Number one, uh, Harry and I met with the representative from Simpson. And we've entered into a partnership with Simpson that allows our employees to, to take classes there at a twenty percent discount. Right?
Yes.
And, uh, so that's, that's a big deal, I think. There's different certifications and master's programs, that kind of stuff to, that our staff can do, so.
Right, right.
Uh, second one, I don't know if you've heard about it at all. But we are, we've started a campaign to get Buc-E's into Norwalk.
Me?
Yeah, I don't know if you've heard that. Uh, so far, let's see, we've been on the Simon Conway Show. Uh, did a podcast called The Iowa Podcast, uh, bit interview with a guy from Substack. So there's a article there, uh, at the state fair. Uh, gonna go to the Iowa pork producers and turn pork chops or something for a while, man the grill. Uh, gonna go to the Iowa Egg Council and hand out hard-boiled eggs as well on, and both of those will be on Sunday. Uh, we have over three thousand signatures so far on the petition. When I'm out, and I hope Jeremy's gonna go with me, I think on Sunday, uh, we're gonna wear T-shirts that say, say the QR code on the back and so that they can, I think the front says scan my back to get Buc-E's to Iowa, and then there's a QR code on the back that they can scan and cha- and get to the change.org petition. So it's been a lot of fun, but I really think that, in all seriousness, having a Buc-E's out at Fillmore on I thirty-five would be fantastic for Norwalk, so we would get, I think, a lot of property tax revenue, a lot of sales tax revenue, a lot of gas tax revenue from, from that location and to be real honest with you, I don't see any tourism from that. I don't see people coming into Norwalk unless we have like a tourism booth out there or something that points stuff out, but so that would be a lot of tax revenue without a lot of traffic into town. So I think, I think it'd be a good thing. So, that's what's going on with Buc-E's and at some point in time, wow, we're gonna, I think we're gonna get over five thousand signatures. We'll, we'll put a package together and approach Buc-E's at that point in time, so it'll be fun. Yeah.
I will say, when I, when I first saw, it was like very early on.
Yeah.
And I had thought it was fake.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. It was like.
Really?
And then I, no, it's like true. And then I thought, oh my goodness, this is so fun. This is a great way to do this.
It's, it's a great way to get Norwalks in advertising and, yeah. Say, hey, here, we're here.
Yeah, it was just so, it's such a fun idea.
Yeah. Oh, no, we can't. No, we don't wanna do that with high B. Yeah. Why is less stock? Should be fun, should be fun out at the fair. Uh, I, I think Ty is trying to get another interview with Simon set up sometime next week, so.
And you've been on every news station in the metro.
Yeah.
It's at every outlet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's been fun so far. It really went viral really quick, so it's kind of surprising to see it. But yes, early on, people were asking, is this a joke?
Yeah.
Are you joking with this?
Yeah.
You know, and it's like, no, we're serious.
Yeah.
I think.
I, I think early on, people didn't really understand where it was gonna go.
Right, right. So, so, yeah, so, that's what I got. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well. I'll make a second.
I, so I heard second first.
Yeah.
From Brown. Uh, Livingston had a motion, Cool had a motion, and then a second. So all those in favor say aye. All opposed say aye. Word adjourned. Kalen is that crystal clear?
You pronounce it slow, you.